Okay, so time is now 5:00 p.m. and I call this an administrative meeting and the City Council votes our special order. If you haven't done so already, please silence your cell phones and sign in at the click one in the back. First of all, the business is to review the agenda for the 5:30 meeting. So after a call to order and a prayer, pledge allegiance, we will review the minutes from the regular council meeting that was held on December 19th, 2023. Council members, do you have any questions about those minutes? After that, we will set the agenda. Item number five this evening is a hospital board appointment to complete the term of Ray McLaughlin. May I, would you like to speak on that?
Yes, Ray is retired recently from the fair road and we just need to replace a portion of what to finish out that term.
Council members, do we have any ideas?
Billy Blackwell would be able to do that.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Item number six is to authorize the mayor to execute EMS contract with the town of Newton. Director Warren, would you like to come and speak on that?
Thank you, good evening. It's time that contract for South End of County EMS is coming up approaching. Of course, y'all are aware that everybody's pulled out except for Newton. Newton would like to stay with us. We don't have a problem with us continuing to cover that. The difference is going to be that we're going to handle it from out here, we'll run from our station here to cover Newton. Of course, you can see that it'll be annually for 11,000 a year, plus all of EMS revenue from vehicle tag sales and renewals. Part of that commission, what they have allotted for Newton, we will receive those funds with additional of $11,000.
Okay. Council members, do you have any additional questions for Director Warren on this item? So if you'll stay up for just a moment. The next item is to approve the request for the two new power stretchers. Would you like to speak on that?
Yes, that's again, that's for, that's going to replace the two stretchers that go on back to Echo being cities that own them power stretchers if went with Echo. Those will go there, so this will be to replace that. In the last few weeks, I've been working on them and those power stretchers make all the difference in the world. So I highly recommend that we approve first those.
Council members, do you have any additional questions for Director Warren on purchasing two power stretchers?
I'll make a comment. We actually have already approved the PO on this. He called me the other night and said, I hate to bother you, but if they didn't get the PO request in, the stretchers were going to go up $8,000 apiece. So I went ahead and made a comment concerning the effort to approve, went ahead and do it. So this is actually after the fact that we were to save $16,000, that's what we needed to do. And yes, we do have the money.
Thank you, Director Warren. Item number eight is to review the request to amend the accounting policy to allow for a 5% benefit to local builders on projects. Mayor, would you like to speak on that?
Sure. This is something that we used to always did with the county. It was 3%, and what it does is that when we're bidding items, if they're within the 3% and they're local, we're allowed to go with that local person. And in '21, when Joe started looking at it, the law changed to 5%. And my thought process is if we have a local guy here doing a demo and he's buying his tires and gas and batteries from Port here in Ozark, then we should give him a little credit on that. So we're just asking to be able to go with a little bit of the person that's from Ozark.
Council members, do you have any additional questions for the mayor on that?
Andre, that's a win-win for our community.
I agree with that. I do have one question. When you say local, do you mean within municipality? Do you mean within county?
You can actually set that at whatever you want it to be. Certainly, I would think would be outside the county, but I think most municipalities do it inside the city. Joe, am I correct on that?
Yes, you can set it for your county or you can set it for larger areas as long as you define what you want to be your area of. Of course, further, what do you get, less impact you have locally. But if you don't do anything, if you don't set the boundaries, it automatically is your city limits. So anyone that has a business within your city limits would fall within the preference. If you want to expand it, if you want to take a look at it and go out to your police jurisdiction, don't do that or go to the whole county. But if you don't do anything, it's your city boundaries.
All right. Item number nine is to authorize the mayor to execute a new lease with Sata Tech.
Yes, Sata Tech, and I'm excited about this company. They are wanting to come into two of the bays in the technology center, and they will use an office space as well, which totals their monthly payment 14, 25, 25 a month. This is a company that went through the generator program at Hudson Alpha in Huntsville. And about a month ago, they came to Dauphin, all the different companies that had been through the program gave their pitch in Dauphin. And along with some of the Dauphin economic developers, we thought, hey, they'd be perfect for the tech center. And so the space came available and they want to be here. They have a lot of potential for growth. I am asking if you would prorate their first month as they will not be moving in until the middle of the month, which is great because the previous tenants have been there for about nine years and it gives us some time to, I'm hoping to get some help from city maintenance and maybe public works to do some sprucing up in there, get it cleaned up and take care of any things that have been damaged over the years. And that's it. Do you have any questions?
Council members, do you have any questions for Holly on approving this lease? Thank you. Okay, so with that, I will go out to department heads in attendance. Are there any department heads in attendance that have any comments or questions on any of the agenda items?
All right, I guess I'll take my city clerk hat off and put my CFO hat on. So mine is the item number eight. I am not for the 5% benefit to local vendors. And it's not that I don't want Ozark to win because I always want Ozark to win at everything. However, the bid law, why do we have the bid law? We have a bid law to prevent favoritism, secure goods and services at the lowest price, encourage free competition and protect taxpayer monies. In today's environment, it's become very difficult to obtain bids. By incorporating an uneven playing field, this would reduce the potential bidders even more. Outside bidders become awareness politics and will become disinterested in bidding in the future. It will also only cause a more increase to expenses because there will be less competition and therefore disencouraging free competition. That's my CFO hat, you know? I get that we want to benefit, you know, the local bidders, we want them to win. But as far as the CFO is concerned, my benefit is the city of Ozark. I'd love to see the city of Ozark win. And when you don't have true competition, you don't have the lowest bids. So by allowing the local preference, this only increases the lowest bid possibility and therefore causes even more of an expense to the city. When you reduce the amount of bidders, the local bidders are going unaware of that. It's just common business that they're going to increase their prices because the competition for bidding is not there. It also prevents vendors from becoming complacent if you don't have that in place. If a vendor assumes they're always going to get you business, what do you think their bid going to be? Well, it's going to be higher than what they would if they had a local, you know, even more bidders in place. So I think it's, you know, in the end, you know, a local bidder, you know, they'll spend extra money in Ozark, yes. But as far as expenses are concerned, and like I said, we have numerous, numerous POs that we get continuously. That, you know, department heads will tell you, we only have one bid because we couldn't get anybody else to bid. Well, what happens when you only have a limited amount of bidders? Prices go up, it's going to cost the city more to do that. That's just my opinion as CFO, hopefully that's carried over with.
Is there any other department head in attendance that has any comments or questions on any of the agenda items?
I agree with what Chris just said, but having fewer bidders, they can raise the price and can get more tickets to Ozark. Hi, everybody. Happy New Year. I agree with what Chris said. I think that fewer bidders that we have, that we allow to provide bids for us, it increases their price. And at the end, the city is going to end up spending more money on those fewer bidders because, just because of the number of players that we have. As an example, Haglers or Sanders or any of those guys, you only have one in town. So we have to, you know, get business from different cities, which end up being much cheaper than shopping in Ozark. I know that we try to spend our money here so we can get no benefit, just the tax money. But sometimes, especially for department heads, it's kind of hard to do that when you only have one person and the price of the business is like skyrocketing. So thanks for considering the bid.
Are there any other department heads in attendance that have any comments or questions on any of the agenda items? Is there anyone in attendance that has any comments or questions on any of the agenda items this evening? Yes, sir. Would you come up and speak on that for us?
Thank you, Madam President. Brian Fonten, 620 Derby County, Ozark. With regard to the bidding that the mayor was in specific and addressing what the county practices are, we have, you're going to have to be careful in how you define if you do the incentive. There's public works and there's competitive bidding. It's very broad brush. Need to make sure. Because the county only accords 5% on its public works, not with its competitive bidding. Competitive bidding of your phones, your telephones, anything like that. As you consider my input in researching other local municipalities and counties, they urge great caution against that. Many of them view it as isolationism. And you're going to have to just be very careful with that, Madam President, as you view the legislation. It actually also becomes imperative that you define local. The last thing, Madam President, with regard to nominations on board. Would the Honorable Counsel please consider maybe some method by which local citizens could petition the legislative body with certain expertises and life experiences and say, I'd like to serve on this board? And perhaps allow that to come instead of going the way we do it now. Boards and committees have a longstanding tradition and they're good traditions, but once appointed, they largely operate with great autonomy, Madam President. And I don't know that that's within the best interest of the citizens. They should have an opportunity to at least vet nominee and equally participate. Thank you, Madam President.
Is there anyone else in attendance that has any comments? Yes, yes, ma'am?
Winnie Fraser, I just had a question regarding the board appointments. I believe at one point, it's been a year or two ago that an issue came up about board appointments. And I believe the city clerk was going to put something on the website that identified when board positions were going to be available. Because the average citizen has no idea when a board position is going to come available. So even if they were interested in a board position, so I was just wondering if that would be considered possible to do.
Yeah, I'm Tim Russell, CEO of Barrymore Industries. I wanted to speak on the bidding process. I was, whatever you want to call it, bidding demo jobs. And was told I was a little bid on jobs and of not getting them, whatever. But I argue that the local people already have a logistical advantage of probably 10%. You throw in 5%, so I'm not sure what motivates a guy to come in and bid at a 15% to 20% disadvantage. Very competitive with all other municipalities around here with my share of Dauphin Enterprise, Dale County. And I would also like to see them sealed, you know, obviously that's y'all's choice, but sealed, open to the public. That's all I got.
Madam President, just to clarify now, the, as Brian said, there's two. Be it ones your public works, be it ones your competitive bid. Your 5% or your discount or your preference does not apply to public works. So if you have a public work, and in many of our cases, public works are related to our sewer and water projects, which we wouldn't be bidding anyway. If you have a public works bidding or a building or remodeling, things of that nature, the preference does not apply.
Thank you. I do have a question just for, does, even though we are not demolishing a public building because we've deemed it a public nuisance, does that not cover a public work contract? So whenever it says, like, title the due extension, okay. Construction repair of, and then it names, you know, structured buildings, da-da-da, on public property. But I know that whenever we demolish buildings that we declare a public nuisance, that still isn't considered a public?
No, because we don't, we don't take title to those properties. They do not become public unless they don't pay this property tax at the end of the year and we happen to bid it in. But by that time, somebody else is usually there to bid the property. So the fact that we declare it to be a public nuisance does not mean it becomes a public property.
Madam President, just one brief clarification there. Public works, I did not intend to define it as being something that belongs to the city, the city's responsibility. But if it is construction repair or demolition, a 5% local incentive has been used by other counties. And that's what they caution, because that's the interest of local businessmen for repair, construction demolition. And it is correct. They put them at a disadvantage because you already enjoy local advantage due to sheer logistics and distance. Thank you, ma'am.
Is there anyone else in attendance that has any comments or questions on any of the agenda items this evening? Okay, is there anyone in attendance that has any public comments or questions on any, any subject in particular this evening? So with that, I will go to the final.
I just noticed in the, in the convention that we skipped over the proclamation.
Oh, the proclamation is not complete. That's why, that's the, that's the only reason I have to. So with that, I'll go to the final comments.
First of all, I have to personally. First of all, I wanted to thank everybody on the emergency side for the response to Peter's family on the house fire the other day. Terrible situation, but our folks handled it about as well as you could handle it. And also at the funeral on Saturday, we had a huge Ozark presence there and I think it meant a lot to the family.
They made a coming.
Yeah. It was, it was as nice as it could possibly be. Give you all a little update. I did receive a call Thursday, I believe it was, from the Adjutant General's office and the new Adjutant General coming in. One of the first things on his briefing from the Chief of Staff is to talk to him about the two tanks. So they are both in an agreement that they'll donate it to us, so we'll see how that turns out. We're still having some conversation with Fort Nova Cell on the putting in some childcare activities in the Eastgate School very early. But we, there are about 65 kids short of a place to put them, the way I understand it. So we sure would love to work something out on that. You should have in front of you a picture of the Eastgate gym floor has been completed. The pictures there do not do it justice because of the coloring, but it gives chance to everybody to look at it. Our guys did all the work on, you know, the walls and lighting and ceilings and all that stuff. And then, of course, we hired the floor done, and it looked really, really good. They're in the process of trying to figure out what kind of bleachers we're going to put in there and get that, get that going. The 231 color wash project, as of last week, I've talked to Marty Russian again. They're hoping to close on the 11th of January and actually start work sometime in February on that. The USDA building, if you go by there, you'll see that they have earthmoving equipment out there. I just want to tell y'all where you know that's about a $1.4 million project out there, so just shy of that. The sewer project that we've had ongoing that goes from the Armory down to Parker Drive, we're hoping that's going to start this week. The development that's across from the Aviation College, we're continuing to be in the kind of planning and planning stages of that. But they continue to move forward with it like they're really excited about pulling that off. The Holman House project that we continue to work on, told Ryan today, and we're looking at forming up a 30 by 60 slab in the back behind our retaining wall. And we will start off putting the tin on it. And at some later date, when we have additional funding, we will actually build the permanent structure on that slab. We'll design the slab to build the structure on. The Andrews apartment area next to Friends of Army Aviation, they have that ready to start the foundation. We do have one thing that we have to work out and figure out exactly how we're going to deal with it. But we're going to need to put a gate on the backside of Friends of Army Aviation to where they will have overflowed flow parking on to the airport grounds out there. We talked about that early on. Let me come back to y'all with some, some things on that. The Civic Center lighting should be completed this week. They have done an unbelievable job on that. All lights throughout the auditorium, they're bright. You need sunglasses, but you can dim them down a green cane on the seat. So it really, really looks good. The Flowers Center abatement on the backside, the, all the, the abatement of the asbestos is done. We have the power cut, we're cutting the water off, we're having to build a wall that will secure the building when we start taking off that backside. So Ryan and him are working on that today and the demo should start fairly soon. I'm going to give y'all a little bit of an EMS update. You should have two documents there. One is about a run that we had to pick up in Echo. And the other one is just about a day where Elaine sent to us, wanting us to see what goes on some days in EMS. And it's pretty amazing that we're able to pull all that off. But that's just one day of it, but lots of days are like that. And on that particular day, Director Warren was driving an ambulance about four and after that, so it was extremely tough. We want to give a final update on Jackie. We did get everything pro-vated on her. We were short a few dollars to the attorney. We're paying that out proceeds that Jackie had left the city. It's only shy $1,600, but that allows us to not have to sell the car to finalize her estate. So tomorrow, I should have the paperwork and be able to put the tag in our name. And we'll have that 2020 card that we're planning on letting, building inspection or actually compliance use. Wanted to just briefly talk to y'all about a project I've been working on for some time. I think it is, needs to be our top priority in this next year. And that's, we have identified two locations on 231 that we think that we need to build a sports complex. And when I say a sports complex, I mean something that we can get the property in our name, do the drawings, design it with whatever we want of it. And then us go after funding, particularly federal funding, to try and get money to build and build it in phases. And of course, we want to start with like one of the larger baseball facilities that, you know, got four or five fields and that kind of thing. One of the locations is the one I prefer, but I think it's going to be the most difficult, is land. The other one, part of the land would be donated to us. The others, there's four parcels involved in a total of about 145 acres. And I'm down to, I need one price from one person. I have them on the others. So hopefully have that in a week or so and we'll get back to y'all and discuss that. And I think we can move forward with doing that. But I want this to be a city-county boat school system project where everybody's in sport out of it. And try to, try to put that together. There's not another one like in Dale County anywhere, and I think it's something that would be a huge economic boost. The reason for putting it on 231, one of them's on the south end of town, one of them's up on this end of town. If we put it in any place, I think we're going to grow that section of 231. So y'all get, I'll get, be back to y'all on that later. I did want to report to y'all that the Dale County United Way, under Heather Cohen's being the county chairman. Last year's goal was 276,000 for Dale County. This year's goal was 300,000. We're already at 325. We think there's a chance we might go to 338. So a really, really good, good time for Dale County. Did want to tell y'all I'll be on Fort Nova Cell tomorrow at a general event with Chair Cal that is running for Congress. Another item that we are working on, Ryan and I and Chris have been talking about it. All In Credit Union has made a request that we take over the, except maintenance of the road that goes through All In Credit Union. Well, the way that normally works is we do that if it's built to DOT specs. And so what we're wanting to do is to present to y'all probably the next meeting paperwork saying that once the last project is completed in there and six months has gone by, if the road still is in good shape, we'll accept maintenance. They made a tremendous investment here. We want to do that, but we also don't want to accept it right after the core done under some construction projects. If you have not done your, filed your economic interest paperwork, extremely critical, it became more critical today. They took 25 Republicans, I think it was, and 66 Democrats off the ballots because they failed in previous time to file for economic interest. Need to make sure we, we all get that done. I believe us all ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman in finger.
I think he covers it all.
Councilman Jackson.
We get what we're talking about on 231, what kind of money we're talking about. Well, I've been an advocate of this sports complex ordeal for a long time.
I was waiting for you to get up at 10:00.
First of all, I'd like to start where we, as a city, proposed a sports complex sometime ago. And that was off the College Street Race Track area. And I still think that we should at least offer those lots back to the original homeowners at a reduced price or at the appraised value of those properties to get them off of our hands. Because it's still city-owned property. I think that's around 16 acres down in the racetrack area. We can unload that, that would be an asset, something to use toward the construction of a new sports. of a new sports complex out off two thirty-one at either side. The other thing is, we got a city-owned street down there, and I don't know what the progress is on it, but I know Ryan had started, you know, working on that street that actually closed up because we never done anything in the racetrack area, and I want to commend Ryan and his crew for the work they're doing down there. And I guess I'm the covering. As far as the boards go, I was the one, I guess, who made the comment some time ago that I thought it would be feasible and only right for the city to post the boards and commissions on the website where citizens could pull it up and see who's on these various boards, when their term expires, you know, that type of thing. It's just good for public access, it's good for transparency for the citizens to know when, who are serving it, when their appointments or term is expired, or what the case may be. The other comment I wanted to raise was the gentleman here from Barrymore Enterprises. What were you bidding on?
Barrymore Industries?
Yeah, you were bidding on something, you mean?
Demolition projects.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you. I just didn't know what you were bidding on, but outside of that, that's all that I'm saying.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Carlin?
I'm excited about the possibility of the sports complex myself, and those are too as well. I know Autry, Alabama, built one, and it has, it has been, they're attracting all kinds of tournaments, the Alabama High School Athletic Association hosts events there too, and get something nice like that here, we could be able to do that as well here to be beneficial to our, to our economy here locally.
Councilwoman Carlin?
Yeah, I just had a question, I just need some clarification, maybe Attorney Duncan, but the five percent, if the, if the local bidder, the way I'm understanding this is if the bill, the bids are submitted, and the low bidder is local, then he would get it here. If the low bidder is somebody from out of town, but the next one up is within five percent and they're local, then it would be the lowest, the local bidder. If it's within five percent of what the low bid. So it's not, it's not limiting, I don't think, to me, that doesn't seem like you're limiting the number of people that can bid, and they've just gotta beat that five percent that the local guy could do. And there's no, there's no guarantee that the local person is the low bidder. An out-of-town person could be the low bidder and still get it.
They just get a five percent lead with this one?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but if they don't meet that five percent criteria, then they're not gonna get it, it's still the low bidder who could be an out-of-town bidder.
You're actually, you're actually correct. It is still a bid process. You have all the bids be open, and everybody's stuck with their bid, and then you measure, you don't just get on the phone and call the local thing and say, hey, can you do it for this? So everything is revolving around the fact of an actual bid.
Right, it doesn't, I don't see how it would deter somebody from another city bidding because they still have the opportunity to be a low bidder if they come within five percent of the next bid that's the low bidder.
Well, margins are so tightly, oh, sorry. The margins are so tight these days with inflation, but you couple the five percent with the logistical advantage, I bid several jobs in the College Street. I did not bid, I mean, the paperwork's there to back up what I'm saying, but, and it was because it takes time and money to go out and put together these bids, and once you know you're wasting your time, that the local guy is gonna get it about no matter where you're at, that it doesn't make sense.
But there's no guarantee that the local guy will get, he just has to beat your bid by five percent. There's still no guarantees.
No, they're not guaranteeing anything.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It's, it's still, it's gonna narrow the competition, and you're gonna see your bids, the people that are bidding go from four or five, and once the guy, you know, the local guy with his fifteen to twenty percent advantage, my being local. I mean, you're running eighteen-wheelers, dozers, excavators, up and down the road, and, and I have containers, potties, all the land here, and I guess I'm not local. You know, I have business license here over just somebody that maybe just have a residence somewhere or whatever. I mean.
Where are you located, or where are you from?
Enterprise, Alabama. Yep.
So do you not do demolitions and things at Enterprise?
I won five of the six places there this last year.
Yeah.
I bid eighteen here, hang sniff one.
Right. Does Enterprise have a preference?
Nope. Neither does the.
Nothing used to have a preference. They do not. They did.
Basically, not.
Municipalities that I contacted, they do not do a preference.
But then they've given, all, everyone that has spoken has given us a lot to think about for whenever we vote in the next meeting. So was that all?
Oh, yes, a happy new year.
Thank you, I just want to wish everyone a happy new year as well.
I got one more thing to say, though. To the mayor, I know we said that proclamation wasn't ready, but we have to understand, the event is only fifteenth, and we won't meet again for council until the sixteenth, the day after the main event?
What we have done in the past is, is that we signed it and then read it at the event. I will not be at that event, I will be out of town, but we'll get it together to us, but if you want to read it.
Yeah, but yeah, that's no problem, but you know, I think that group would like a photo op with my newspaper later, since they're here tonight, so.
Do you all want to go ahead and do the photo since, since we're here?
Yes, they're here.
They don't have it written?
I mean, just.
You can fail.
Yeah, we had.
Let me have, let me have one thing, I forgot. Two or three weeks ago, I was contacted while I was college. They are bidding on a project, and I don't know exactly how it works, to where they're wanting to do some nursing schooling here at our hospital. It's kind of a deal where they're gonna be doing training outside the hospital and in, so if they get it, college would be doing some rehab work at the hospital, like in some of the buildings in the back, and then they'll be doing training in and out of the hospital. So part of this package that they were bidding on, they asked us, all they asked us to do was that we would provide them the civic center for the graduations at no charge, so I committed to do that, of course, y'all have to approve it, but that was for their bidding purposes, but it would be hundreds of nurses circulating through here in this training.
So do we want to do the photo op, the photo?
Do we want to do the photo op?
Do you want to speak to you?
I, I, yeah, we've already closed the questioning part of the meeting. Sorry. But, okay, Eric, you can come on up, please.
I'm Joe Whitton. Some of you may know that here and I, we operate the dog pound here across the street. I've got a question on the business license process. Is there a guideline or procedure that is, that is used to come up with price for business licenses?
That's a great question, maybe you would have to ask that, but to our department.
We need to check with Beth Groder.
Yeah.
She's got the details of how your business license is calculated.
Well, I'm just wondering because Enterprise for a food truck business license, Enterprise is a hundred and fifty dollars plus a, a twelve-dollar issue fee. Headland is a hundred and fifty dollars with a fourteen-dollar issue fee. Duffin, Alabama is fifty dollars with a fourteen-dollar issue fee. So now we come to Ozark with a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar business license with a fourteen-dollar issue fee. I'm just wondering, the extra hundred dollars for, for the business license, is that, is there a justification for that, or is there any, any process, or I'm just wondering what the extra hundred is? Even the closest towns being larger than us, we still have a higher price on business license for food trucks. To me, if we lower the price on the business license for the food trucks, not only will it bring diversity into Ozark as far as food trucks, but it will run a, a higher sales tax revenue coming into Ozark? Is this something that can be looked at to possibly lower this a little bit, to at least be competitive with Enterprise, Duffin, and Headland?
Okay, Mayor, can you check with us on that for us?
I'm not, I'm not sure if, I mean, did we say that?
Yes. Yeah, the council said it. I remember when it was said, I wasn't on council, but I remember sitting.
When, when, when the mayor, there was.
Pretty us.
Yeah, I remember that.
Of course, these food trucks have just now become more popular, there's more of them around, and I just didn't know the reason why Ozark was the highest in the area.
What's the, what's the sales tax in Duffin?
Nine percent.
The sales tax in Ozark?
Nine percent.
Nine percent.
Right. But now, you know, with us being small, you know, Duffin's fifteen, twenty minutes down the road. There's a lot more people, a lot more opportunity to make more money for less, less business license. We're local, we'd like to stay local. We'd like to bring other people in here that have food trucks to give people for lunchtime of a ride, you know, for people out in the atmosphere of the food trucks. If we could just look at that, if there's a procedural process that is behind this, if that's something we can look at, maybe amend a little bit, because like I said, they are more popular than they were in years previous, maybe we can get some more in here to serve Ozark.
All right, thank you, sir. The mayor said he will check with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, Mayor, you'll just email, like, whenever, because yes, that is not something that at least me on council ever heard. Okay, so with that, I will call this meeting to a close, and yes. Oh, the, the picture, yes, so y'all will come down. Ozarks are ordered, we will open with a prayer led by Councilman Enfinger and a pledge allegiance led by Mayor Clay.
I just, to this honor, we just thank you so much, the good things you've given us, Lord, and the blessings of life, Lord, and the freedom we have to meet here, Lord. Girl, we just want to ask each one have a blessed new year, Lord, and everyone to be safe, Lord. We ask you to guide this meeting in Christ's name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ellen. Our first order of business this evening is to approve the minutes from the regular council meeting that was held on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I approve the minutes from the council meeting held on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three as presented.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on approving the minutes as presented? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is to set the agenda for this evening's meeting. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we set the agenda as presented.
Thank you. I do have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on setting the agenda as presented? All in favor of setting, of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five is a hospital board appointment. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, we nominated a black, black one to the hospital board.
Thank you.
That's what they turn to finish that.
Thank you. I do have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any further discussion on this board appointment? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is to authorize the mayor to execute an EMS contract with the town of Newton. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I approve the mayor to execute an EMS contract with the town of Newton.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any further discussion on authorizing this contract? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven is to approve the request of two new power stretchers. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the request of the two new power stretchers, move versus adoption at the, at our price of forty-five thousand four and thirteen, twenty-four cents.
Thank you.
Forty.
Forty. Okay, I got it wrong.
There's two.
Yeah, there was two bids.
Forty-one.
Forty-one, nine, seventy-one, twenty.
That's it, that's it.
All right, so I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on approving this request? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is to review the request to amend the accounting policy to allow for a five percent benefit to local bidders on projects. What are the wishes of the council? So there's no motion on the floor? Okay, so item number eight is tied for lack of motion. Item number nine is to authorize the mayor to execute a new lease with Sata Tech. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I approve the mayor to execute a new lease agreement with Sata Tech in the amount of one thousand four hundred twenty-five thousand twenty-five cent each month, with the first month being prorated, and for a total of seventeen thousand one hundred and three dollars for the year.
Thank you, I do have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this authority? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So with no further items, Mayor, final comments?
I've got one thing I want to tell y'all, just for confirmation. I was cleaning out my home office yesterday, and I found a newspaper where we, as a city council in O'Neal, got in an ambulance business, and we bought four new ambulances for two sixty-four.
Oh, gosh, oh, my God.
Charles, I'm not sure you can buy two for that amount.
Maybe one man.
Nice one.
That's all right.
Councilman Enfinger? Councilman Jackson? You keep looking, you're thinking.
Look at the Lord.
Councilman Carlin? Okay. So with that, I will call this meeting to a close. Thank you.
Oh, I have a motion to adjourn. Better stay put, I'm sorry.
I have a motion to adjourn. So moves. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of ordering, say aye.